Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Roseville's City Council Meeting of July 20th, 2022. We are glad you're here. I would like to ask our clerk to please read the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Haldeshelt, Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Here.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Here. Thank you. Vice Mayor Haldeshelt, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The honor to. Let's salute my pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our clerk if she would please review the meeting procedures.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 20th City of Roseville City Council Meeting. If you're present here with us tonight and have not already picked up an agenda, please feel free to do so at the end of the staff table to your right. Speakers wishing to address the City Council tonight may do so by stepping up to the podium. Each speaker will be provided with five minutes, I'm sorry, three minutes, to address their comments to the City Council with a maximum allotted time of 25 minutes. Speakers that would like to address the City Council on items listed on tonight's agenda will be given five minutes to share their comments. Please be reminded that the Brown Act prohibits our City Council from taking action on items not listed on tonight's agenda and to have a back-and-forth discussion on those items. Again, the time will be monitored, and once the red light flashes, please conclude your final comments. Lastly, if you are going to address our City Council members tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you very much. We'll move into public comment. Now is the time for anyone to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to do that? No yellow cards yet? Nope? Okay. I'll close public comment. We do have one last public comment towards the end of our meeting, so we'll open it up then, too. We'll move into our consent calendar. I'd like to ask our clerk to please read those procedures.
Thank you. So all matters on consent are considered routine in nature and will be passed by one motion. There will be no discussion on any of the consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council staff or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. If there's any other member of the public that would like to pull an item for further discussion, please let us know now. Okay. Seeing none, Mayor, I'd like to present to you items 6.1 through 6.2 for consideration and approval tonight. However, staff has requested that item 6.8 be continued to the August 3rd City Council meeting to be heard as a public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve? Thank you. Mayor Bernascony, can I get a motion to approve?
Move. Some of them.
Thank you. Councilmember Albert made a motion to approve and seconded someone. I didn't hear if anyone seconded that motion.
Else.
Oh, great. Thank you. So we've got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Albert with a second by Councilmember Rucucci. Well, that will start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernascony.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Bernascony. I apologize. Thank you. With that, we have a 5-0. Again, approval of items 6.1 through 6.21 with the item staff that has requested 6.8 be continued to the August 3rd City Council meeting to be heard as a public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, we will move into item 7.1, Letter of Support for the Gathering in State of California Community Care Expansion Program Funding Application. And staff will be presenting. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Bernascony, members of the City Council, Melissa Angiano, your city's economic development director. The item before you tonight is seeking direction regarding a letter of support for the Gathering Inn's application for community care expansion grant funding from the State of California Department of Social Services to establish a medical respite center in Roseville. And if direction is given to prepare said letter, we are asking council to adopt a resolution that would authorize the mayor to sign a letter on the city's behalf. Contingent on site control and funding, the Gathering Inn, TGI, is proposing a medical respite center at 300 Alifa Street here in Roseville. The proposed site is located in the Los Cerritos neighborhood and within an approximate 500 feet radius of Woodbridge Elementary School. Tonight, we have Roland Tellier, Chief Operating Officer, and Ron Arneson, Program Director, both with the Gathering Inn, to provide an overview of the proposed center and answer any questions council may have.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony, City Council members. Thank you for having us. Do I have a sec?
Yeah, it should be pulled up.
There it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to go next?
They'll, they'll, they're automatic back there. You just keep talking. Yep, they'll, they'll know.
Okay, wonderful. So the Gathering Inn is requesting council support for a application that we have submitted to the Department of Social Services for expansion of our medical respite program. To give you a bit of background on the medical respite program at the Gathering Inn, we started this program back in 2009 with main support, grant-supported funding from Sutter Health and Kaiser. The typical stay at the respite home is anywhere from a week to three months. We provide recuperative care only at the site, and that's typically for folks experiencing homelessness that have been discharged from the hospital or are frequent utilizers of the emergency room. So we work very closely with the hospital staff to get them connected to services, and they will come and stay with us to complete their recuperative care either after serious illness or an operation. So if you just think of it, like, if you go into the hospital for a procedure, they send you home with your after-care instructions, follow-up appointments with your doctor, and maybe some home health and physical therapy, we provide the environment for those individuals to get those services. While they're staying with us, they're connected with a case manager who helps them with a housing plan to figure out their next move once they leave our program. And they'll look at housing options for them, whether they go into supportive housing, transitional housing, or a shelter. We entered into an agreement this year with Sutter to have a Sutter-funded position located within the hospital to act as a community care navigator, and that position is responsible for liaison between the emergency department and the social workers at the hospital. And we'll work to identify those frequent utilizers of the emergency room and frequent stayers at the hospital to get them connected with our service and try and get them on the path to wellness. The eligibility requirements are the same at the medical respite as they are for all of TGI's programs. We do not, our eligibility excludes 290 sex offenders, violent offenders, and we do have a plaster county residency requirement for our services. Some of the outcomes from last year and through the first six months of this year, the annual capacity, we have the capacity to serve about 100 people a year with our current facility in Auburn. We have 10 beds. They're double occupancy rooms. So far this year, we've served 45 guests. The, the next two outcomes, I think, are very important to note. When a lot of the people come into our program, they don't have a primary care doctor, which is why they're frequent utilizers of the emergency room. So while they're staying with us, one of the first things that our case managers do is help them get connected to primary care, so they have a source of care to follow up with, and they don't have to utilize the emergency department. The other piece is the work that we do with our guests while they're with us to transition them to a more permanent housing situation when they leave. So we will help them move into either permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, or the shelter. So as of June of this year, 83% of the people that completed our program did move into some type of, of housing. About half of them into permanent housing, so they're, you know, entered into a lease agreement, they're tenants. About a third of them go into one of our shelters in Auburn or South Placer, and roughly 12, 13% go into transitional housing, which is like a, you know, limited stay.
Yeah, so about 6% go into the, yeah, transitional, and about 12% actually kind of refuse services, not interested in staying in the shelter. Always have that option, but they just choose not to.
Right. So, so even with being able to serve 100 people a year, the need is still great. Gathering Inn operates the only medical respite care home in the county, so we're it. We get about 300 referrals a year from Sutter and Kaiser mainly. They come from the hospitals. And the need was exacerbated when the whole-person care pilots were discontinued at the end of last year, so that program went away. We were approached by Sutter to expand, and when we had the opportunity for this funding, they were happy to lend their, their support as matching funds for this, this grant opportunity. So with the discontinuation of whole-person care, the, the CalAim initiative came in, and that's, we're able to get reimbursed for those services under Medi-Cal Managed Care Plans. So there's the, the sustainability aspect to the program. So a little bit more about the opportunity. We have a couple renderings of the property itself. We are looking at a, let's see, 30, I need the next slide. So the next slide shows you sort of a rendering of the first floor. It's a two-story building. We will have single occupancy and double occupancy rooms. Typically, in medical respite programs, the standard is a double occupancy, but we feel like some of our guests do need to have more private rooms depending on what they're, what they're coming in to stay with us for. The center of the first floor is a kitchen and communal dining area, and in that dining area will also serve as a place for us to provide life skills classes to our residents while they're there and any other group activities that we might have. There is a lift located next to the stairwell for those guests that might need that to get up to the second floor. Obviously, we're going to try to accommodate folks that can't do stairs on the first floor, but depending on capacity, we might need to use that. So that's it. Second floor, you'll see there's a nurses' station there. I'll talk a little bit more about that as, as we talk more about the opportunity. So as I mentioned, the funding is coming from the Department of Social Services Community Care Expansion, and on your slides there is a link to the actual request for applications. If you want to get into that reading material, it's there for you. The funding was established through AB 172 in the last session, and I've given you the, the chapter and sections of, of that legislation where you can find the establishment of the Community Care Expansion program. The site itself will house 10 single and 20 double rooms for a capacity of 30 guests at a time. There will be 24-hour staffing, overnight staff. The staffing piece is important because that also helps us keep an eye on our guests while they're staying with us, and if they are experiencing pain or need to see their doctor, we're able to take them and take the burden off of calling 911 or having them go to the emergency room. We were recently chosen as one of 15 medical respite programs in the country by the National Institute for Medical Respite Care through a partnership with Kaiser Permanente to participate in a learning collaborative. So we'll be among 15 other respite programs that are in various stages of implementation, from just starting out to well-established, and we'll be participating in monthly learning collaborative meetings to share best practices and learn from each other and address our challenges that we're having and help each other as a collective. With that participation in the learning collaborative came some funding, and we're going to be able to add a part-time nursing staff to our services that we offer. So we'll have somebody coming in, kind of doing rounds, like, in the morning to check on our guests as well. That's, and then staff training also is going to come with that opportunity. Some of the community support efforts that we've done, we had a really tight timeline for this opportunity. The, the RFA was released in January, the application portal opened in mid-February. We did seek out, we did look at a couple other sites before we landed on this one. The first one, the seller decided not to sell. The second one was already under contract, and then we, we found the Alifa site. And then negotiations back and forth with the seller. By the time we got a final offer, it was about mid-June, and then our, our outreach started immediately after with extending invitations to the City Council members and Mayor Bernascony to come and visit the existing program in Auburn. And four out of the, one, two, three, or five members came and visited us and got to see firsthand how the, how the program operates up there. We did meet with representatives from Los Cerritos and the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Associations via a Zoom call. We reached out to them, and by the time we got that scheduled, we, we had a Zoom call with them, basically gave them this presentation that you just saw tonight. And the day after we met with them, we did in-person outreach, knocking on doors and, and talking to neighbors and businesses in the surrounding area, and passed out flyers with the overview of the program and my contact information, phone number and email in case folks had questions. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Sure, but you may want to stand if there's some questions to answer.
Staff, do you have anything further?
That's the end of the presentation, and we can open up for questions.
I will give the council an opportunity to ask questions. Is there, are there any questions either of staff? Councilmember Albert, you want to start us off?
Yes. You mentioned that there were 300 referrals and 200 were denied. I was wondering if you could explain why 200 were denied, what kind of situations require denial?
It's mainly occupancy right now, so we just don't have the space.
It's too full to take more?
Yeah. We're, we're like 90% of the time full, so.
Do you ever have a patient that you would have room for, but you choose not to bring them in for some reason?
If they need a little bit higher level care than we can provide. So, yeah, that does happen occasionally, but there's a process to that. So there's typically a history and physical scent. We'll do some analysis on our side. We'll go do an inpatient visit, walk through it really closely with the case management, and specifically, if it's not something we can provide, ask them to look for a skilled nursing facility.
Who does the background check on the sexual offender and violent offender? Is that them or you?
We do that, yeah.
So you might deny, that might be another reason for denial?
Yes. A reason.
Do you have any kind of, I mean, typically, I know many of our homeless are invisible, but the homeless that we see on the streets talking to themselves and, you know, tweakers that are pretty obvious. Do you have any criteria that would stop you from bringing in something along the lines of there have other issues that you don't want to introduce into the House?
So when we do, like, an assessment, there's a series of things that we're looking at at the hospital. So then there's certain requirements that they need to meet. Are they alert and oriented? We'll do a baseline assessment like that. I also now have access to Sutter links, so I can see the electronic health records. I can dive pretty deep into the past and clinical staff or medical staff, right, a really good kind of description of what's gone on in the past. So it's pretty easy to make a good, get a good analysis of what's going on in that person's life.
And would you use that to rule them out as being not maybe a fit for the environment inside the home?
Yes, if they, if it was somebody that could not fit in, in the home, for sure.
And I'm just going to add that, like all of the programs that we have at the Gathering Inn, it is a clean and sober environment. So we do.
And Ron, will you introduce yourself, because not everyone might know your role there.
Hi, I'm Ron Arneson. I'm the Director of General Care Program Services, soon to be Medical Respite Services. I think we're changing the name, too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, just have a couple, a series of questions here. So how long is your Auburn facility? I toured that, but how long was that there? I forgot. It's been a while.
Since 2009. So not, not that location. We've had three separate locations, but we've been partnered with Sutter and Kaiser since 2009.
Okay. And what kind of issues have you had up there with your residents and the neighbors while they're residents?
So our neighbors are awesome. We, we rarely have any kind of incident, to be honest. So our folks are all medically compromised. They're not loitering in the neighborhood. They're recovering from diabetes, congestive heart failure, several serious illnesses or injuries. So they're ended up running around most of the day. We have staff there, like Roland said, 24 hours a day. They're well-trained, all kinds of best practices-type stuff, which I could go into, but I could go too much. I get off on a tangent, but, but, yeah, they're, they're well-trained to handle a lot of that stuff, those types of behaviors, so.
And the 24-hour staff, you, you do have that up in Auburn right now? You currently have 24 hours seven days a week? Okay. And then, that's fine. And then the other thing is I, I'm not clear on timeframe contingencies. I think that'll be an important issue tonight. Could you explain the timeframe of, you know, how soon do you need this?
Oh, the funding?
What if it's longer? Yeah, a letter from it.
So the, the grant opportunity, applications are accepted on a rolling basis. The application portal opened on February 15th. The, there's a, a regional allocation for regions in the state that divvies up the money. So there is about $580 million for the whole state, split up into regional allocations. They're accepting applications, like I said, on a rolling basis, and they're reviewing and approving them as they come. Once September 30th rolls around, the regional allocations get put, whatever's left over gets put into a big pot for dispersment throughout the state. So the allocation for our region, which is the Sacramento region, will, is only there guaranteed for our region until September 30th. And they sent out an update July 1st. They've received statewide, they've received 120 applications for about $1.3 billion in requests. So.
So is, is there funding still to get?
There is still.
If, if this letter was provided, how soon would you be able to have the property? I mean, you're not even guaranteed you'd get the, the grant yet, right?
Right. Yes, we just submitted the application, so we still have to go through the review process for that. They did sketch out where all of the requests for funding were coming from in the counties against the allocations, and there's still, surprisingly, there was still money left in the, in the Sacramento region. LA was like triple the requests for what was available.
That's all the questions I have right now.
You know, the benefit of going after Councilman Albert is you check off a lot of the questions you have. So thank you. Thank you, Councilman Albert, for that. So you answered that. Um, thank you for the opportunity to visit your site in Auburn. It's always good to get eyeballs on it. The eight, I'm, I'm unclear on the process. So let me explain what I think it is, and you tell me, you tell me where I'm, got it right. Someone is unsheltered, and they go to Sutter or Kaiser or, or System. They receive care, and they're ready to be discharged. You have a list, so you know who they are, right? And then you, based upon your criteria, then you offer them the respite. They can say yes or no. Okay? And then they can say a week or three months. What's the average age of the folks that?
Average age is 56. Well, at least from Jan. 1st to June 6th, I did a little analysis just to see. But, yeah, 56.
I did a little analysis just to see, but yeah, 56, in that range from.
The program you're applying for funding for is called CAL-AIM, and what does that, the acronym stands?
No, this is actually the Community Care Expansion Program is the funding source. CAL-AIM is, it's the improving.
Advancing and innovating medical care.
Yes, Medi-Cal.
That's why I got the perception that your average guest at the respite was older in, you know, in age. The property in Auburn is on how many, what size is the property in Auburn?
Probably, I would guess it's a half acre. It's close to that, yeah.
Allowed to have, are your guests allowed to come and go?
Yeah. For the most part, obviously, we want folks resting and recovering, so, and most of them are pretty compromised physically. So, you know, you have issues of diabetes, or they've got diabetic, you know, neuropathy, develop some ulcers on their feet, things like that, could be recovering from a injury, car versus bicycle type injury, congestive heart failure, COPD. So these are folks that are really pretty ill and need to rest.
And their family can come visit them?
They can. We have a procedure for all that.
The county has, they're getting ready to open a facility, I know it by Lotus. Is this similar to the behavioral?
I'm not familiar with Lotus.
It's not a behavioral health facility.
Yeah, this is in Kirby Hills and?
Oh, no. So that's, that's the companion piece to this one.
Are you familiar with WellSpace?
Mm-hmm.
And can you talk about what they do and how it's similar to what you do?
So WellSpace isn't in Placer County, but they have a medical respite somewhere in Sacramento County. They just expanded, I believe, but I don't know much about the program.
Okay. So you're, this isn't brand, I mean, these types of programs have been around for a while. Great. Now we're going to get to the, now we're going to get to what I think the essence of, for me, what the litmus test is here. And I appreciate the outreach you did, and I do want to hear a little bit more. I hope that we're going to hear from some folks tonight, but I want to hear more about what your future outreach is. You mentioned a Zoom call. Who was that Zoom call with?
With members of Los, like people's names?
No, just organization.
Members of Arcona and Los Cerritos Neighborhood Association.
Okay. But was it with the neighborhood?
Leadership.
Was it, was it, has there been a meeting with the neighborhood association?
Not beyond leadership.
Okay, great. I'm super, I'm so excited that you've been chosen by the National Institution of Medical Respite for the learning collaborative. I think that's great. Joe, at our last meeting, we had a bunch of zoning ordinance changes, and one of them was related to low barrier navigation centers. What is this property zoned?
So this particular property is currently zoned community mixed use, and I know we do have planning here too, Greg can get into it, but this is zoned community mixed use, which is a slightly, it's a different use than the low barrier navigation shelter that you're referencing from the zoning ordinance updates, which also technically, we read it for first reading, so I think it's on for second reading tonight.
So is this by right? I mean, would this, this type of facility, because of the zoning, be a by right use?
Under the, so this wasn't really touched on in the presentation, but under our municipal code, we did have planning, looked at it, and we believed that the use would be allowed. And I think there was a question about whether or not a conditional use permit was needed, but one of the conditions of the Community Care Expansion Grant, the actual legislation that was referenced, it states that anybody who's a recipient of the funds from that program, they are allowed at the local level essentially by right. So there, expressly says that at the local level, any zoning regulation, land use, et cetera, is, doesn't apply, and any discretionary approvals are waived. There is still a requirement to obtain a building permit, so that construction has to follow that portion, but as far as the entitlement portion, the express terms of the grant make it a by right use at the local, at the local level.
And before we hear from Greg, if I understood, the grant outreach is highly recommended?
Yes.
And enhances your chances of?
It makes for a stronger application.
Yeah, okay. I don't think I need to hear from you, Greg. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mendota?
So just a couple of things. Thank you for your presentation. I am, I had a chance to meet with some leadership at the Gathering Inn, and I am familiar with your Auburn site through the right-hand of Auburn, who's been up there for many years. So we've, all of us have received letters and emails and things over the last week or two, and people are on both sides of the fence of this. So I'm just going to roll through a few things, and you tell me if I'm, if we're tracking, and then correct me if I'm wrong, because I just, I want to understand it, and I think that, you know, there's been some misconceptions, and I cross out a bunch of stuff. Thank you, Councilmember Alfred, and have a shout for covering some of the items I was going to ask. So this is respite only. This is not a mental health facility. This is not a shelter. This is not taking the place of the shelter that was proposed on the west side of Roseville. It's not a detox center. Basically, this would be if anybody in this room was to go to Sutter or Kaiser, and I had a hip replacement, or I had heart failure, or some sort of a neuropic episode, I would have insurance. So my insurance would provide me at the time of discharge to go to a care facility or a rehab facility to get better, rest my hip, or get the care I needed, and then from there I'd be released back to my house, or wherever I lived, or to a loved one's care if I was elderly or whatever. So putting that context here, obviously, our homeless populations don't have any insurance. So this is just substituting what we would all receive if we were hospitalized and needed long-term care after our medical stay expired, because we were no longer ill enough to, or I'm sorry, medically ill enough to stay in the hospital, but still needed extensive, or some form of care. That's what this would basically be, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And to make sure there's follow-up care after, so they don't get discharged from the hospital, go along their way without primary care, and then end up back in the hospital two days later.
This is to make them stronger, and in essence, you know, this type of a program, some facility, is actually helping our partners at Sutter and at Kaiser, because these people released, you know, back out onto the streets, which eventually, I mean, they're homeless, so when they're done here, they're going to go back out there, but they'll be in a better spot to navigate that. I mean, you used the example of a vehicle versus a bicycle. So if someone wasn't able to heal up a hip or a leg, or, you know, whatever it is they were, there's a good likelihood they'd end up back in that emergency room.
Absolutely.
And again, going back to the insurance part, now this hospital is going to be out money twice, you know, serving these people. Whereas there's a good possibility through this process, they might get paired back up, you know, with a family member. They could be released, you know, this could be a pathway, if they were a veteran, for instance, they get hooked up with the Veterans Administration. I'm assuming you guys work with them, so, you know, there's opportunity for additional housing and possibly getting them off the streets through this process.
That's a really good point, because a lot of the folks that come to us have never been in the shelter, or don't really want to go to the shelter. They've been maybe living on the street or under a bridge or something, and they're sent to the hospital. They come to us, they're still reluctant to use shelter, emergency shelter services, but after time with us, they're more confident, get comfortable. We take them to the shelter up in Auburn, and so last year, or last six months, 10% of the folks that were reluctant to go to the shelter at all finally went to the shelter that were in that timeframe. So it's a, it's kind of a stepping stone, you know, they get used to us and get used to being comfortable there, we'll transition them to the shelter at some point.
I wanted to highlight that, because it wasn't in the presentation, but I thought that was, I wanted to clarify that, just to be sure.
It's the beginning of a continuum, if you want to look at it that way.
Perfect. And, okay, yeah, that's everything I had. And then as far as the visitation, I know that one of my fellow council members touched on it, and they are able to have visitors, but I'm assuming that that's, that falls along the same parallel as a regular visiting hours would be at a hospital, right?
Yeah, visitors are pretty rare.
And it's pretty limited, yeah. So you get, you get an hour, it's in the common area, it's got to be, staff's got to know before they're coming, there's a whole, we have a whole policy and procedure around that.
But it's not.
Yeah, so it's a 24-hour operation, but there are limitations on egress and things like that. Okay. And then my understanding was, with my communication with your staff, that there is transportation provided, so, you know, they're not just going to be released and wandering around. If they have to get to an appointment, or they have to go from the hospital to your facility and back and forth, that's, you're going to provide, you know, van or transportation services for that.
Ron picks them up a lot of the time and brings them. Our case managers work with Medi-Cal for medical transport for their appointments, and if we can't get them transportation, Ron or the case managers or one of the staff will take them.
Beautiful.
Where they need to go.
Okay, I appreciate you allowing me to walk through that, because, you know, facts do matter, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kuchin?
Yeah, I was able to go to, I think, one of your centers. It was in a, it was in a neighborhood. And do you have, did you have some other ones that were close to B Street or?
We did at one time, the whole person care and in-person care program.
Someone was mentioning that there was a respite center up there, but that's not where I went. I went to a neighborhood that looks like a neighborhood, you know?
Right.
Okay. I just have a few questions, just like the others. Sometimes people bring their cars, so that they, they could drive if they are physically able to drive. I'm just, but so, but most of them may not, or, or just like I, I could have a car, but I might have a procedure that I can't drive my car.
Right. So the cars kind of ebb and flow right now. We have nine guests at the house and no cars. So the cars are just staffs.
Okay, I just kind of want to.
It's kind of up and down depending on.
And if you're, if you have this site and it's called a respite site, how long is that, that title good for? I mean, you know, let's say, would you be a respite site for 20 years, or is there something on that grant you have to do it for so long, or?
30.
Okay, 30 years.
Section 30.
Okay, I wanted to know that. And after that, 30 years from now, I'm okay with whatever's, it won't be mine, there'll be another council here. But my question is, okay, but if, if, let's say it was a respite site, but it might want to be something else, would your organization be, because I think right now by right you can do whatever you want to do. Would you, I'm just, would that be something of, I'm just going to throw this out about, oh, you're standing, okay.
Real estate people, it's a deed restricted.
Okay, the only reason.
So we can't, we can't switch it up. We can't switch up the use.
Well, that's the only reason, Keith, I'm just saying, is there something, you know, after 30 years, if your organization was looking to do something else, can they, can we condition, you know, if we even get that far, because we couldn't say that it would have to come back to council?
The Gathering Inn would agree to that.
Okay. Just so that there was an option.
So we're, Keith Dieter, CEO of the Gathering Inn, by the funding, we have to run it for 30 years with that use.
Okay.
After 30 years, you're correct, we could do whatever we want with it. We would be willing to say right now that we would enter into an agreement with the city of Roseville 30 years from now. I know I won't be here, but the Gathering Inn very well may be, that we would enter into an agreement with the city of Roseville to come to a mutually agreeable use for that property. We would do that.
Okay, thank you. That was a question of mine. I also had a question. On this site, you're going to have maybe a medical person that's come in the daytime or sometime. I was interested in medications. How do you do their meds? Do they keep their meds in their room? Do they have a locker? And, and I'm just, first I'm thinking like antibiotics and things like that, but then I'm thinking there may be some that still need pain medicine, like a narcotic. How do you, how do you, how are you going to handle that?
So right now, currently, the medications are managed by the guests themselves. We do have lockers. They were kind of in the corner there, I didn't know if I pointed them out to you.
You know, could you talk a little bit louder?
I'm sorry.
I think it's just me, I can't hear you.
I don't know if I pointed them out to you when we were there, but we do, yeah, that's what we do now. So guests are meant to manage their own medications. At the new site, I'm not sure how we will do that yet, but I think we'll have somebody probably manage the medications, so we'll have somebody who's got some clinical training do that.
Well, I'm even thinking sometimes some people are elderly and it's real hard for them, and maybe they used to be able to do it, but right now because they're sick and it just, you know, their vision isn't quite so good, and, you know, I'm taking my Monday medicine with my Friday medicine, and, you know, the whole ramification.
That's the, we'll jump in there with what we can, so pill boxes will help with that type of stuff. But yeah, we'll try to get them as organized as possible.
I just have to tell you a funny one. My dad, when he was that elder, my husband, my engineering husband would say, oh yeah, we'll put everything Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and it was fine. My dad would take a little Monday and a little Friday one, and then we realized that it looked nice, but sometimes not everybody can do that. So there'll be people to help these people through that. Okay, I think that was one of my questions. And, and this one, I'm just saying it because, I'm saying it, but if, it's a respite center, but if somebody knocks on your door and wants to have food or take a shower, that's not your, that's, you don't, you don't do that. Only the people that are there.
Have to be referred.
They have to be referred because they're here for a medical treatment, and once it's over, they go someplace else. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a few questions too, different from my colleagues. Thank you for having me up at your property too. I was there two weeks ago today. So when did you enter into negotiations or an agreement on this property on Alefa?
I have my handy-dandy timeline here. So we started negotiations April 30th.
Okay.
Completed, there was an offer accepted on June 10th.
On June 10th, okay. So when did outreach begin to the neighbors?
To the neighbors? So we wanted to have all of the city council members come and visit first, so if you were to get phone calls from your constituents, you would have an idea of what the program was all about. So our last visit was, our last council member visit was July 7th.
I explained to the neighborhood, like when did that start? The knocking on doors and?
Knocking on doors happened on the 16th, and we met with, of July, so not that long ago. And then the 15th was when we were able to get our, our meeting with the leadership from the two neighborhood associations, and then we started with the neighborhood the next day.
Because I, I was, the first contact I had, I think, was towards the very end of June, and so I was there July 6th. And the first email that I received from any neighborhood was, any neighbor was this Monday. So I think that your outreach over the, over the weekend sparked a bunch of emails that I received. So I haven't been getting anything for a couple weeks. That just started on Monday after.
Yeah, I think the agenda items sparked a lot of.
Yeah.
Have you had any outreach to the school district? Because some of the letters did reference the proximity to the school, and I just, has that been part of your outreach?
We have not at this point.
Okay. Are you able just to briefly highlight just long-term funding?
So long-term funding.
Sustainability.
Right. So Sutter is very committed to this program. They absolutely see the value in it. I know that their, the president of Roseville Sutter did submit a letter to the council, and it should be in your meeting packets for tonight. The CAL-AIM funding, so the Medi-Cal Managed Care Plans, we are contracted with both of them in Placer County, and I'm having discussions with Kaiser as they start to come on board with that funding stream as well. So we are contracted with both plans to be able to accept referrals and submit claims for our medical respite services. So that will help substantially with sustainability, because we've been offering these services since 2009 strictly on grant funding.
So just roughly, what's the breakup between, say, the hospital, between Sutter's portion of the funding, and then your other, the other two pots of funds? Is it, you know, in thirds?
Right now.
Right now, it's all Sutter.
Sutter and Kaiser.
And Kaiser, yeah.
Okay. But in theory, would it be in the thirds, the funding? I mean.
Future funding, it's, it's hard to tell, because we just started this community supports thing with this funding stream, so, you know, probably 75% Medi-Cal, 25% Sutter.
And I just ask that because, you know, just long, you know, funding's available maybe now, but we just, what's a long-term, 30 years out? You mentioned that, for example, this year, you said that so far, you know, 45 guests have been served, and 83% exited to housing, which would leave about seven individuals that didn't exit to housing. What, where do they go? So if they don't go into a housing, you know, you're not able to find housing for whatever reason, what happens to those individuals?
So anybody who wants housing will get them into the shelter. The problem is some are not accepting of a shelter stay. So, those are the folks that do their thing, go back to probably where they were prior, unfortunately.
They just go out the front door.
Oh, no. Well, yeah, I'll get, I typically work really hard to get them into one of the shelters. If they're not agreeable at the end of their stay, then I'll get them back to where they were prior to being hospitalized, so.
But that's, that's the street.
Absolutely.
So, they could just go out the front door.
They don't go out the front door, but they go to, yeah, where they were before, essentially, yeah.
Okay.
So, they're not going to walk out the front door and where the neighborhood is and just walk away.
Well, if they don't have, if they're not agreeable to go to a shelter and it's time for them to go, then where do they go? I mean, you said back to where they came from, but that's the street.
Right. So, maybe they came from the street down here in Roseville, ended up in Center Roseville Medical Center, was sent to us, and they're not willing to come to any of our shelters after the six-week stay with us. Then when we ask them, you know, hey, your time's up, or they'll move them down there, put them back, bring them back to where they were, essentially.
What do you, just a couple more questions. What do you see the relationship being with the nomadic shelter, with the Gathering Inn's nomadic shelter? Do you see that, you know, there'd be any connection between the two in terms of it's time for someone to go? Would they then go to the Gathering Inn in Old Town? Do you see that happening?
So, or with Placer Shelter. Either one of those is an option for them to go to, depending on their mobility. South Placer has a few more challenges with having to get on a bus and go to the churches.
So, your guests could go to that nomadic shelter too. Okay. And can you just talk briefly about the eligibility? So, we've talked about, you know, the desire to want to serve those in Placer County, from Placer County, who need support. But what is the eligibility process? You know, you get somebody from Sutter or Yuba, you know, they come in, the hospital's wanting them to come to you, or they've applied for services through, you know, Medi-Cal, through the hospital. So, is it, how long would it take somebody to get eligibility in Placer County, say, that isn't from here?
So, the, yeah, the eligibility piece, I don't know when it would actually officially be established here. But what they do in the hospital setting is they'll basically do presumptive Medi-Cal, presuming the person qualifies. And so, they get instant benefits so they can go and get medications and see a doctor here locally. I think it's between 30 days and a little bit longer before it's actually, you know, assigned to Placer County.
Okay.
We got a referral from, a discharge from a patient that we know is from Sacramento County or Sutter County. Ron will work with them and the social workers at the hospital to do a warm handoff to a medical respite program in one of those counties.
Okay. And then I think my last question is for staff. Are you able to clarify if a letter is required, you know, a letter of support is required from the city of Roseville? Because I feel like we've gotten conflicting information about that.
Yeah. And so, we had looked at the initial grant application as well as the RFA, which had some FAQs. And those documentations did imply a letter was required. But we reached out to the state and we actually got a response from the state just about 5 o'clock this afternoon. And the state confirmed that a letter of support is required, but that letter of support doesn't have to come from a city or county or tribal government. It can be from the CEO or the board of the organization. But the correspondence we got did indicate that the, an application with more letters of support is a stronger application and an application with less would be a weaker application. So, it's a matter of having a bare minimum versus beyond that. So, that was, that's the response that we got from the state this afternoon.
Okay. Okay. I don't have any other questions. I know we want to get to public comment and I know I'll bring it back to the council for follow-up. Is there, does the council have any burning questions?
I do. You're applying for infrastructure funding. Open June 3rd. When does it close? When does it close?
September.
It's a rolling, so it closes whenever the money runs out. That's the best way to put it.
Okay. Are we good to open up public comment? Okay. Thank you all for being very patient. Thank you for answering our questions. I will open this up to take public comment. We typically reserve 25 minutes. Did you want to follow up with anything?
No.
Okay. So, we'll just give the audience an opportunity to make comments. If you could fill out a yellow card, we'll take them in that order first. We do allow 25 minutes for public comment for this item. So, I'll just ask all of you that we have read your letters. And if somebody else has made that point, we just ask that you not be redundant with it. So, we definitely want to hear from all of you, but we want to give an opportunity for everybody to have time to speak, so. Yeah, our clerk can take them. And thank you all for being patient. Okay. So, we'll start with Marcia. Amont, do you want to come up and speak to this item? And you'll have, you have three minutes and you've got lights right there.
Yes. My name is Marcia Amont. I'm from, I live at 134 Carmel Avenue in Roseville. I also own a home that's at 738 Alefa Streets, so, and was born and raised in that home. So, I know the street and well. I just want to make points because I think that's the only way I'm going to make it through three minutes. Is, one, there is a daycare that is one block away from this. The daycare was not notified that this was located, this was happening. There was no knock on her door. There's school and there's also this Woodbridge School, which is a walking school. It's a neighborhood school. People walk their children. The crosswalk for that neighborhood school is one block away and it's 500 feet from the site. The drive into the site area was a driveway, not a street or an alley, as has been stated in all the documents that you received. It is a driveway. They did get a right-of-way off of that particular driveway. But there is no parking along that driveway. There never has been any parking, so this building will not have parking. They will, anybody, their staff and such, will be parking on the street. If you've visited the site, the entrance into the street is very, very narrow and they're coming off Washington Boulevard, which sometimes we have to go a little quicker than we need to be coming off. And when the homes have put cars there, it's become very difficult. If it's a medical facility, we don't have medical facilities in the city of Roseville that are usually inside people's neighborhoods. The medical facility, if you, if you think of Roseville Hospital, Roseville Hospital was moved from its site to its new site up at the end of Sunrise because of neighborhood building up around it. And that was one of the reasons they did that. This building in size does not complement the neighbors. It, they're single-family residents right next to it. The neighbor on the one side is going to be five feet away from a two-story building that's going to overlook a backyard that has a swimming pool in it. Access to the site from Washington Boulevard is difficult. If sick individuals need services, we agree with that. We have not ever not wanted to help the homeless or help the otherwise. We have two transitional housings that are in our area already that are well-known and they're used by the Gathering Inn. So, we don't, as a neighborhood, can, want to hurt the homeless. This is a good idea. It's just not in this area. The, by this building site, it gives us none of that. The current sign in front of the site shows that there's supposed to be four buildings. It does not show the other way. Based on just the information that they've provided you, that means one out of six residents in there will not accept their information based on their data. If that's the case, what are we doing? I understand these people need help and I applaud that. That's why we were okay with them going to Camp Hope. Camp Hope was a site that was located away from housing and is part, and this was part of the Camp Hope site. This was not Camp Hope as a whole, but it was an intricate piece of Camp Hope. And as far as that goes, that's fine. But why are we putting it inside a neighborhood with single-family buildings? Most of those buildings are not two-story in that neighborhood. They are all built in the 1930s.
Thank you for your comments. Sarah. Heidi will take Heidi Nest. And then after that, Sarah McGeorge.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Heidi Kenost and I have lived in the Los Cerritos neighborhood since 1997. And I currently serve on the board of the Los Cerritos Neighborhood Association. Jackie Pfeiffer is also on the board, but she was unable to make it tonight. This statement is a joint effort of ours. "We respectfully request that city council does not offer support to the Gathering Inn's expansion until the Gathering Inn completes the standard process to hold informational meetings to the neighborhood, as is required by the city of Roseville. The council communication states the outreach was completed, but this is not a true statement. In fact, the Gathering Inn was scrambling at the last minute, as you heard, to do something. But it would have been impossible at that late date to be considered a good faith effort or even effective. Transparency in proposing a project is key. The Gathering Inn needs to mail postcards to all property owners, not just the renters, within 500 feet of the property line, inviting them to an informational meeting to provide residents with an opportunity to gather, hear about the proposal and ask questions they may have. City staff and council members should be invited as well as those involved in the Los Cerritos Neighborhood Association and the families and staff of Woodbridge Elementary School, which is located two blocks away. We assume that we're all decent people here who want everyone to receive the health services they need in order to live the best lives that they can. We know we want that. However, we all need to assess whether this residential neighborhood is truly the best and only available location for a large two-story business operation of this type. We are aware that an application has been submitted to planning for the same site for four residential units, a use that would be welcomed by the neighborhood as it is in keeping with the existing character of a residential neighborhood and would also address the lack of workforce housing. We know that city council wants to see all its residents receive information in a way that meets professional standards, a known obligation across the city and known by the Gathering Inn. This proposal will impact this neighborhood, for good or for bad, for the next 30 years at minimum. And our neighborhood deserves more than a two-page glossy informational sheet. We have questions. Does engineering have safety concerns for the short stacking distance so close to Washington Boulevard and where Alefa narrows? Will neighbors regularly hear noises throughout the day? Can patients leave AMA out the front door? We just haven't known about any of this. And this can't be compared to the nice house in the neighborhood in Auburn, which houses a third of the number of patients that will be in this building. I found out about the Gathering Inn's proposal last Thursday, less than one week ago, from a neighbor, not from the Gathering Inn, who just happened to look at the newly released agenda posted online for tonight's council meeting. And my house is within 500 feet of the property. A person's reaction to sudden news that they perceive could be a threat is different from that of having been incorporated into the process. I hope you will take that into consideration as neighbors are just learning of this facility and rightfully have concerns. We all know that when you want to obtain buy-in, you make these same people part of the conversation. When there is distrust, secrecy implies nefarious intent. Our Neighborhood Association is working hard to build trust and this oversight is destroying that effort. Please remedy this oversight by tabling this item. The neighborhood remains open?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, and did, which one, which one?
I'm Dawn Marshall.
Thank you.
I am actually the one who owns the daycare. I have signs up in my house, on my fence that say daycare open with my phone number. I am home all the time and I never got a knock on my door. There's a few things that I noticed. They said that they're not taking mentally ill people. However, on their flyer, it states that it is severe mental illness that they will be dealing with. So, that's questionable to me that they said that they're not, but in their flyer it is. I found out about it yesterday because of Facebook and they posted it yesterday. So, I have a concern. I have a concern because I'm a single mom with an infant, obviously. And if these people are allowed to just walk out the door and possibly go two blocks away to the other gathering, that's adding more homeless people to this area and a bigger problem versus making it better for the people who live here and who have invested in this community and who love this community. I've noticed there's tons of Halloween and Christmas decorations and I take my son last year to walk around them and see them. And I will not feel safe if there's a facility that allows their people to walk around that have mental, severe mental illness. It's not safe for me and it's not safe for my community. It's not safe for my son. And they even said that those people, if they choose not to go to one of their facilities, that they could just walk down the street. And that's just adding to the problem versus helping it. So, I think that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay. Anyone else have a baby? We'll get to the front, yeah. We'll go, does Sarah want to go next? And then we'll do Camilla after.
Okay, thank you. I am here tonight to speak out against the proposal by the Gathering Inn to build a medical respite facility at the vacant property located at 300 Alefa Street. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think the location is just wrong. My biggest issue really is the location. I love downtown Roseville. I've been a member of this community for 12 years now. My husband was born and raised here. There has been a lot of growth and a lot of revitalization that is happening in downtown Roseville. And a facility like this is going to do nothing but detract from those improvements that the city is investing in. The site in Auburn is not a family neighborhood. There are not small children that live right next door. The elementary school right around the corner is the oldest one in the district. My children went there. It is full of families that walk to and from school. We already have a park in our neighborhood that is unusable because of the homeless issue. Weber Park, I know is, there's a plan to make it better and that is amazing. But this is not going to help that problem. The Gathering Inn, as other people have stated, has not done the outreach that is necessary. 300 feet to me is just not okay. This is an issue that is going to impact our entire neighborhood and our entire neighborhood needs to have some say in what is happening within our community. Quality of life will be impacted as well as our property values. The Gathering Inn also has been inconsistent in the materials that they have provided. The agenda item tonight states that it will be a 20-bed facility when they've already stated that it's 30. That is a huge difference that there needs to be explanation for. I also have concerns about the grant and how it's written that once they get this funding, they can do whatever they want with it. To me, that's unacceptable. So, I'm asking you again to not support this proposal at this time. Let's find a way to make this facility happen, not in a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Camilla?
Hi, I'm Camilla Hancock. I live at 514 Alefa Street. And I am a new homeowner of just about, just a little over six months, but I've lived on Alefa Street since 2018 as a renter. I found out about this proposal two nights ago via a neighbor who texted me at 10 o'clock at night. 2018, I had my daughter and I had had a son before. It was 9:00 in the morning when the police knocked on my door and asked if I had any camera footage because my neighbor's house had been broken into. We live on large lots that are about 20 by 40 feet and the back of our lots are not regularly watched because at this time, as a renter, there was a fence between the back property and my home. I told the cop I do not have cameras, but you're more than welcome to go look back in my backyard. And at that time, I had found my backyard to, the garage had been beaten down, the door had been broken into and I had been robbed during daylight with my neighbor and the access was from our back properties. I do not and cannot watch my backyard 24/7. I really am curious, this community outreach that was said so many times, if this was a community-supported thing, I would have been notified since I live two streets down. I tried to have my son's sixth birthday at Weber Park. We found needles at the park. At his birthday, I had to call 911 because there was a woman claiming to murder a man. I really respect these other women who've had more kindness towards the situation. But this is not a community-centered proposal when you don't give me a homeowner right to know what's going on in my neighborhood when my neighborhood is already at the point of being put with a safety issue of something that is blocks and blocks away. So, I wonder if there wasn't a community outreach, is that because if they did knock on our doors, we would have had the entire neighborhood being opposed to something literally right around the corner from a street and right around the corner from our houses? You said that people aren't going to walk out the front door. What door are they walking out? Back into my backyard? I wish that I had more empathy towards the situation, but being in a 1930s neighborhood- I wish that I had more empathy towards the situation, but being in a 1930s neighborhood where we already have issues with people speeding down our street, I call the cops every two weeks with safety concerns. This is just another safety issue that's already happening on Alifa, and I deserved the right to know what was going on in my neighborhood. I will be here for the next 30 years. I just purchased my home. I'm going to show up. I'm not going anywhere. I'm 30 years old. I'm a part of the community now. So I'm here to be a part of the community, and I really ask you to oppose something that puts safety not even on a consideration for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and congratulations on buying your home.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Sandy, and then after that, we'll move to Kristi. Good evening.
Good evening. Most of my comments were emailed to everybody, and I believe most of my comments were also stated by my friends that are here. I also am asking that there is no support given for the letter. But as my friends all stated very well, all I'm going to ask is that you understand that I'm a board member of Los Cerritos, and I never got any notification. There was no Zoom call, and I'm checking back on the Telegram, and there was no Zoom call or notification given to the board members for a meeting from the Gathering Inn. So that's all I'm going to state. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kristi, do you want to come forward? And after Kristi, we'll hear from Kevin, and then Stacy, and then anyone else after that.
Thank you for letting us speak. I wrote something else, and then I chicken scratched it out. Similar to some of the other folks here, I've lived on Main Street, a few blocks from the Gathering Inn, since 2020, and actually just bought my own home two months ago on Lawton, which is four blocks away from the proposed facility. And I think most of the reason why I'm here is I found out on Monday about this meeting, kind of like everyone else was not aware, but I've lived in this community for three years. But specifically, on Sunday night, I had a man hop over my neighbor's fence, clearly high on meth and wearing half of his clothes and trying to break into my house while I was home. And it was a very traumatic experience, and my dogs protected me, and I think if that hadn't happened, I probably wouldn't feel so much that I needed to come and speak today. But my biggest fear is a bit of the lack of consistency, as some others mentioned, about what's stated in the FAQs, which is it is going to serve severely mentally ill, and it is going to serve people struggling with substance abuse disorders. Those are probably the most difficult situations to deal with. I've worked with a lot of homeless folks. I've worked with social workers, and it's an issue. I do not... I don't oppose this project, but I do have some concerns, and I think the reason why I don't oppose is that I think we need to be compassionate. But I have some issues. I'd like to see an increase in specially-trained public service officers. Those are not just your typical police officers. They are specifically trained to deal with these types of folks experiencing these issues, and I'd like to see an increase of them patrolling the neighborhood. We know folks are out there. We know the issue of substance abuse is getting worse. We know the issues of people experiencing homelessness. Those numbers are increasing, hence the need for this project, and hence the reason why I don't oppose something like this. I'd like... How will loitering in the surrounding neighborhoods be addressed? For facilities like this, you can leave at any time. No one can force you to stay. They've made that pretty clear. And as others have mentioned, where do they go? They go into neighborhoods, because that's where they came from, or street corners or wherever. They're not forced to go anywhere. So I don't know how loitering will be addressed, if it's by police, if it's by facilities, managers, or just the neighborhoods. I know the care inside the facility is going to be fantastic, so I support that. It's when they leave the facility. I'm very nervous for my own safety and just being able to walk around my neighborhood. How will TGI plan to address parents' concerns? If there is an issue, it is really close to that school. I was kind of surprised that that was a facility that was selected, and I'm learning there's daycare facilities nearby. It's worrisome. If there's going to be some type of way that they will communicate with parents or teachers or the school board, as was mentioned, that had not been brought to the school board. And another commenter mentioned Weber Park. I lived a block from Weber Park. I never could go to Weber Park, and are we going to have another Weber Park in another part of Los Cerritos? I also am a little bit concerned about doubling or tripling the size of the facility. The lack of consistency there was confusing to me as well, 20 beds, 30 beds. But doubling or tripling the size of the facility on a really, really small lot that seems about half the size of the one in Auburn is a little interesting. It seems crowded to me.
Can I ask you to wrap up your comments?
Sorry, I'm done. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Kevin, you want to come forward?
Hello, Council. My name is Kevin LaChance, and I am the president of Arcona. I'm also the vice president of Roseville Heights Neighborhood Association. And just because many of the things that have been discussed already, and I think it's evident from a lot of the comments, just in general, I was going to attest towards one thing, in that I and three other members of Arcona were invited to actually attend an information and a presentation from TGI that happened, I believe, on Friday. And after that, the agenda had already dropped, and so it had become contentious. Before that, it was just kind of a project that they were looking at doing, and I'll be honest, I initially hear of it, and I'm like, "TGI project in a neighborhood. This is going to get contentious. I hope they have lots of time." But obviously, they don't quite have that. So I can understand, and I can give a nod to them that they feel under a lot of pressure, but the tightness of the timeline and what I would say is legitimate concerns from the neighbors about just outreach and how much has been done and whether or not it's thorough enough. I went to a presentation. It was great, but not just the presentation here. We had a lot of one-on-one conversation and questions, and we were able to get our answers. And I feel that it's unfair that I was the only one, and two other members had that opportunity, and I really feel it would be fantastic if the rest of the immediate neighbors had that level of interaction from TGI specifically, because it was a good presentation, and the questions were meaningful, the answers were well-thought, and that's the level of interaction I would personally love to see. And so we left that meeting discussing having another meeting in the public that we can advertise and try to get people out there, too, as soon as manageable. It was not manageable on the short timeline before the agenda, but it is something that we can definitely work out with them over the next few weeks, if at all possible. And so my suggestion, if council is willing to maybe table this consideration for what is before them at this moment, until that, you know, basically, meeting can happen, and all of our residents can actually have their questions and concerns addressed by them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Stacy, do you want to come forward? And this will be the last one, unless there's someone else that wants to come forward or fill out a yellow card. I want to give you an opportunity to speak. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernusconi and council members. My name is Stacy Rogers, and I am a property owner at 417 Alifa. And tonight, I'm here asking you just to table the Gathering Inn agenda item, as they have not really participated in any community outreach, allowing for questions or concerns to be answered to all affected residents. And I just want to thank you for your consideration. Thanks.
For your comments. If there's anyone else here tonight, you can come forward, and please fill out a yellow card.
Here's my yellow card. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. My name is Ellen DeBach Riley, and I just wanted to give my personal experience, because I was on that Zoom meeting, and so I did hear the presentation. But I actually went and I visited the location in Auburn, just as you did today, and I didn't see dangerous people. And I hear a lot of concerns that people are afraid that these residents are going to be a danger to that community, and that's not what I saw. I mean, I understand that the Gathering Inn on Berkeley already serves people that have addiction issues, and they already serve people that have mental illness, but that's not what this is. It's a medical respite for people who have medical conditions. So I don't see them as being the danger that the residents are assuming they will be. So my consideration, you know, based on my witnessing them today, is to support the program.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak to this item? You can come forward. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Ruben Perez. I've lived here my whole life. I was at the shelter for a couple of years, and I just want to tell you, my experience, it was life-changing. I had a lot of emotional problems. I had a really up-and-down life where it drew me to that facility. And I did a lot of growing up there. I did a lot of growing, far as finding out who I really am, getting through a lot of emotional problems, and then taking on physical problems. 2019, I had a hip replacement, and through conjunction of Sutter Medical and the Gathering Inn, that was... That made it possible. And then going to the ICP House in Auburn for a period of time to recuperate and get the proper care. And I just want to state that if I didn't have that, if that wasn't available to me, I would still be... I'd probably be in a wheelchair right now, because the pain was just unbearable, if you've ever suffered from some sort of joint pain. In my condition at that time, it was just bone-on-bone. There was no cartilage no more. It was just... I mean, there was no pain drug, nothing medication that could alleviate that pain. That pain was just excruciating. But through, like I said, the Gathering and Sutter, it was possible. And I just... I understand the concerns of the community. If I was a homeowner, and say if I had a family, I would say, yeah, I would definitely. Those are valid concerns. But also, one of the biggest misconceptions is that not everything, the front exterior doesn't tell the story. There's a lot of good, good people that just made horrible choices. They've just taken the wrong path. Me, raising my hand, I'm one of them. I just took a real big step backwards, and I don't know, this is honest to God, if it wasn't for the Gathering Inn, I don't know, I would probably be dead. I mean, I was just... I was down, very down, to a point where I wanted to commit suicide. But through proper counseling, but through the undying support of the Gathering Inn, I was able to, you know, pick myself back up, and now I have a place to stay. I feel better about myself. I mean, I'm 51 years old, and I feel like I'm starting over for the first time, because I know who I am now. And I just want to let everybody know, like I said, I understand your concerns, but not everybody had... We're not that stereotypical of mental health, drug-addicted, alcohol. There's people that look like me that have just taken wrong turns in life and just needed that helping hand and support, and that's what they provide. They just... They don't dismiss you, and they don't discard you as a piece of trash. You're a human being, feelings, and you're valid. And they want to help you get to the... They want to help you as much as they can, as much as you want to help yourself. And if you're willing to make that obligation, they will help you. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you for your comments. It's good to see you.
It's good to see you.
Been a long time. Anyone else want to come forward? Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Stephen. In 2019, I found myself living in my car with a dislocated shoulder and dying of congestive heart failure when I wound up at the hospital. I didn't care. It's not a great place to live, but not a great place to be. And I met Ron, and the Gathering Inn in Auburn, the respite, picked me up, got me back to a healthy park where I could live, and unfortunately, the only place to go was the shelter. But I have health issues, so that I'm susceptible to cellulitis. I just got over it again. And the second time I went to the Gathering Inn, every morning I would wake up, I was sad that I woke up. About three weeks ago, I went. I was at the Gathering Inn in Roseville, and I understand the way the people that live in the neighborhood feel, because living at the Gathering Inn, I felt the same way, abhorred at how the day people treated the community, treated the shelter where I lived, treat us. And I got cellulitis, and I went to the hospital. And I'm living in Auburn at the Gathering, at the respite in Auburn. If I hadn't have gone there two weeks ago, I probably wouldn't be standing here in front of you. The thing that people have to differentiate is that this is not the shelter. This is the homeless people who are here, not the average homeless person you see on the streets. I couldn't jump over somebody's... Over a fence into somebody's backyard. If I did meth, I would die of... I would die, because my heart couldn't take it. The people who are here, who are in this program, are people that if you... If Sutter didn't create this program, would be discharged to the street, and you'd be finding... Pulling bodies out of tents. That's the part you need to realize, is that these people get discharged, and they either go to Tent City, or they go to the shelter. The living in the shelter is different than just taking the day services from the shelter. And unfortunately, we get all of the crap that falls on everybody else. Living at the shelter, I'd go sit at the train station every morning, and I pick up trash at the train station. Why do I pick up trash at the train station? Because I want to sit at a train station where there isn't trash everywhere. These are the things that need to be thought about with this program, that these aren't the same people that are jumping over fences and breaking into houses or attacking people in their homes. These are people like me with serious health conditions who can't live in a tent, because I require a machine to sleep at night. And that's what this program provides. It gives me the little bit of dignity to know that I don't have to go find a tent to die in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We are over on our time for public comment. I just want to make sure that everyone who's had a chance to speak who wants to speak. And so I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the council for further deliberations. Does anyone want to start us off?
Yeah, I'll be happy to.
Oh, okay.
No, go ahead.
No, no.
No, no. After you.
After you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So just a few things. So a lot of comments tonight, a lot of different, I want to say, assumptions and things like that. So again, facts matter. Keith, you got a second? Can you get front and center? So there were some comments made, and I think the last three, two or three people that spoke kind of hit on it, but you are... This project is adjacent to a school, which has been brought up tonight. And there's been some people who have mentioned in the public comment that this particular project is going to be dangerous, and it's going to create dangerous situations. And we've got an individual who I empathize with, you know, who has a daycare. We've got kids walking back and forth to school. So I just, you know, on the record, right now, you know, you're telling us, and staff report provided this information, we're not housing... I'm sorry. You're not servicing sex offenders.
Correct.
You're doing a background check before they check in here for this respite care. Okay. So that alleviates, you know, a lot of the dangerous scenarios. In other situations, you know, as part of these people's registering as sex offenders, they're not allowed near schools, near daycares, near different places and things of that nature. That's not going to be a concern here, because you're alleviating that through your intake process.
Correct. And can I add one thing to that? Do you think that medically fragile homeless people are more likely to abuse little children? Do you think that? And if you do, then you should probably deny the letter. But show me a study that says that medically fragile homeless people are more likely than your average person walking down the street in Roseville to engage in that behavior.
Fair enough. Another question, as far as bringing crime and unsavory activity into the neighborhood. Can you speak to how many calls for service you've had at your facility in Auburn? Ron?
One chair's called at one...
In what time period? One call in one year?
You're going to have to come to the podium if we're going to do Q and A. Can you just make your comments and maybe not do it back and forth?
Yeah, okay. So I just want to bring that up. Okay? And I'm familiar with the... Because I've checked into it with our staff, the levels of call in that neighborhood for other types of crimes that aren't related to homelessness. The list of addresses that all of us were provided that showed... I don't think it was you, but members of your staff that went and did the outreach. It was dumped into three buckets. There was left a flyer, contacted support, or just contacted with... There was left a flyer, contacted, support, or just contacted with, with, you know, no, no opinion one way or the other.
Correct.
Can you speak to what the radius of that list was?
David, why don't you come on up and speak to that?
Because there's been some concern that, you know, I live this far away and I didn't get notified, or I live this far away and I did. I'm just trying to nail down what the outreach was.
David Loia with the Gathering Inn, Director of Strategic Initiative. So on Saturday, I had some time. We went from Washington in Alefa down to Las Vegas, back down the other side of the street, from Alefa to Treasure Lane on Hill in Avila, Avila there. Of course, the, on Washington, the apartments and homes right there on Washington, on the property, and then the businesses in the business park behind the property on Washington, 699 Washington, where all the, the stores are, the Country Gables.
So, see Las Vegas. So you basically made a square, and that was over how many days?
I was, I had, I had about two and a half, three hours to do that, so I was able to do that.
And, and you're standing by that list? That list is accurate as, as presented to us? As far as the number of contacts?
Yes, yes. I knocked and talked to about 16 people, very briefly.
I just want somebody to stand behind that list, okay?
I'll stand behind that.
All right. And then one last question. What, it was brought up about the loitering. Now, I know you're not just going to push them out the front door because, I mean, you would, you're, you'd address that as far as taking them back to where they were found and doing a dental handoff of it to somebody outside the, our county, kind of a thing. What are you going to put in place as far as loitering out in front? Is there any sort of plan for that?
Ron, why don't you come up and address that? Come on up here. What do you do now at the Auburn program?
So we don't, again, folks are there just resting and recovering, so.
So you don't have a loitering issue in the Auburn location?
Do not.
Okay.
No.
Those are my questions. Thank you, gentlemen.
Councilor, could you, do you want to go next?
Yeah, thank you. Just a, kind of a, an outline. You're here and looking for support, a letter of support for, for respite care. If, I'm just, if you got it, and if you got the funding, you still have a process to go through, right? Like that property there, you know, it's not, it's not yours, somebody else has it. I'm saying a few things because I just clarify what I've heard here in the audience, and some I didn't realize, that on that site, right now, that's a project that the owner is looking to build, is three two-story houses and one, and one, one house that's one story. So there's three, which I didn't know because I thought there was only two, but there's three. And that's kind of, not your proposal, that's what's on the table. So if you even were able to get this grant, there is a process? Or maybe I should ask staff. What, what happens?
Well, I can opine, I'll let you know, I should say that in May, you may recall that there was an item that was brought forward to the city council, and that was an item regarding a summary vacation of right of way. It's approximately 1,400 square feet of right of way at the very front of that property. It's basically the piece of land that is, touches the street and then touches the property. So it's the very frontage of that along Alefa. And at the time, the council made the findings to support that summary vacation based on the findings that the adjacent landowner was building the project that you just identified with the, the two, two-story, and then the one ADU in the back, the three unit, the three.
Three stories plus one.
Yeah. And so at the time, the findings for that summary vacation were based on that, that representation. That hasn't happened yet. And so if it turns out that that land is being sold for this purpose, that summary vacation will have to be readdressed by council because the findings aren't, weren't for a.
Different project, yeah.
Exactly, correct. So that has to be overcome, assuming that the land is needed for purposes of the project, this, this proposed project. But that issue still has to be addressed. And part and parcel with that was, our municipal code requires findings from council, but the other piece of it is we're dealing with surplus land. And as I know, the council knows, under the Surplus Land Act, there are basically two paths. And one of them is an exempt exemption route, and one requires certain noticing through HCD, California Department of Housing and Community Development. And in this particular case, we went the exemption route, but we had to get HCD's sign off. And HCD did that, issued that sign off to the city, but it was based on the project that's being proposed out there by the current landowner of the, the three, three buildings. So we will have to also go through that HCD process again if it turns out that the, that this is what's happening at that site instead. We can't, because that hasn't happened yet, you can't get approval for the one and then use it for another purpose, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I just want to show that there, there's still other things that are going on. It's, it's not, it's, it's a letter, if that was even possible, and if you, and not only for us, for your support, if you got it, there's still a process to go through. That's, that's all I have to ask.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, Mayor Burris, Kenny, I'd like to go next.
Okay, you're up.
Clear to me. What is proposed is different. Compelling to me is different. What's not compelling and what needs to be compelling and what needs to happen, so it's different, but what's not different is the process. When we have an applicant who proposes something in the community, they go through a robust community outreach process. It could take months, but they do that. And sometimes out of that comes some things that the applicant never thought of. Mr. Bach Riley, you've been involved in that. You know that well. That process has to happen here. And we have the president, the vice president of Los Cerritos, Rosso Heights, sorry, get together. We have the community here, some who understand and recognize and support medical respite, but some who need their answer, their questions answered. You need to do that. You don't need to rush this process. You need to do that outreach. And when it's time, I'll put a motion on the table to table this as been requested by the community.
Councilmember Albert, thank you, Vice Mayor Hatchell.
Well, this is interesting. I, I think, I want to ask, start by asking kind of a dumb question, but I do apologize. A homeless person, I'm looking at our, our legal team over there, do they have any less rights than any other human in our neighborhoods?
No, they have the same rights.
They have the right to walk on a sidewalk, they have the right to go to a park. If they are a sexual offender, they don't have the right to live in a certain distance of a school. And that's homeless or not, has nothing to do with. We do have violent offenders who live in neighborhoods and houses, and, and I know of some. That's one thing I just want to put out there. Another thing I observed is the, the four houses, with three of them being two-story, they look right down on that guy's pool next door, those three houses, multiple windows from the design I saw. This particular thing, when I spoke to the Gathering Inn about it, my concern was two stories looking down on somebody's pool. And you agreed that you would frost the window on that side. Okay, and they're saying yes. So that's great. So there's nobody looking down on the neighbor instead of having three houses with multiple windows looking down. So I think that actually helps your neighbor there in that, in that sense. I know right now, one of the things is should we wait and go back to the neighborhood and let people talk? I, I think that should have happened before it came here. However, this is televised, it's recorded, and I read all the letters, I heard all the comments, and pretty much everything's repeat. I didn't see anything that wasn't talked about tonight. I think we've hit everything on the table of the concerns. I think this would, in my mind, I think this is okay for being a community outreach. I don't see anything new coming up by letting this go out in the neighborhood for another month or two and talking, it's going to be all the same issues. So I think this would cover it in my mind. I'd be comfortable with that. And I know that's not real popular, but I don't see anything new happening, so why just delay it? I think we just need to make a decision on it. One thing that I was impressed in learning about the respite program, and I asked the question, where does a homeless person in a respite program, medically fragile person, where do they rank as far as being a problem? Because at the Gathering Inn, we have a nomadic model where people will come and hang out there in the neighborhood, and you guys are very aware of that, people walking in and out of the neighborhood. And, and you've got people kind of all over the place, all over the spectrum sometimes. And when I asked the question, and everything I've heard about it, and when I've read about it, in other programs, it seems like these are pretty gentle, not, not a problem kind of situation. And I'm convinced of that. I believe that's a true, as far as homeless people go, this is probably the best situation that we can come up with. Except maybe somebody who just recently became homeless trying to get them right back into a home again. I'm impressed that over half, and it looks like we're getting close to 60%, actually get put in a home. Not, not just shelter, but they actually get put in a house, permanent supportive housing or emergency supportive housing. And that's pretty neat. That actually lessens our homelessness. This particular program actually pulls people off the street and gets them into permanent homes. So that's kind of a nice model, especially in our community, we need to be doing more of that. I have one other question, I'm trying to find it. And then the recidivism, reading the, the Sutter Health thing, a homeless person getting back on the street that's still medically fragile, is very sick, very, is going to end up right back in the hospital again, this becomes an economic issue too, because it's just a cycle of, of problem. And, and this is, again, a nice way to get somebody healed, a human being healed, and get them into a home, and now they're not homeless anymore. So that's helping solve a problem. So in, in my mind, I'm comfortable, assuming that we've done a good enough community meeting, and, and I'm okay moving forward with the decision tonight, whether to support or not, so.
Thank you for your comments. I will provide just hopefully a few brief points. First, I want to say that I did visit the property July 6th, and I agree with my colleagues in the sense that I didn't see, at that time, anybody there that seemed to pose any sort of threat to the public at all. It appeared to be a typical home, and there would be nothing that would indicate to me that it was a medical respite. Now I'll share that that was 10 beds there, and I don't know that everyone was there, I didn't see 10 people, but it was a clean home in a nice neighborhood, and I don't have, did not have any concerns. So I just want to put that out there, that I don't believe that this would attract, you know, the same sort of individuals that we see at the Gathering Inn. But I just want to walk through the timeframe a little bit. So you knew about this property in the spring, you know, took control over it June 10th. The first email I got from the Gathering Inn team was the 21st, asking for a meeting, and I gave a date and that didn't work for them, and I ended up being there July 6th. And at that meeting, I asked about, has there been any community outreach? And they said there had been no community outreach. And my recommendation of them was like, you have to talk to the neighbors, you've got to let them know what's happening. And it appears that, that was July 6th, it appears that the knocking and with folks didn't happen until this past weekend, the 16th, for two and a half or three hours and talking to 16 people. And so while I don't have concerns about a medical respite, I do have concerns about the timeframe and the intent to do that community outreach. And I wonder if we hadn't given them, or I hadn't given them the recommendation to talk with the neighborhood, would, would that have happened? I have concerns that the daycare wasn't notified, that the school district wasn't notified. We have a, a list that was provided to us that has addresses, and all of them say that there were contact, well, there's many support, but I don't know that that really claim paints the correct picture because we've heard tonight from folks that primarily are not supportive of it. The letter from Sutter Health came in today in support, which, so to me, this feels like a very rushed process and, and with the feeling that I know that there is, it feels like an emergency on the Gathering Inn's part to move this forward, but a city, a letter of support isn't required for this to move forward. And we've heard tonight from the neighbors who've been very polite, and they're deeply rooted in the community, and their letters have been very thoughtful, that they're saying we can probably get our questions answered and get to a yes, but we are not at a yes yet. And I share that with the caveat that, you know, there are often times that we have to make decisions that the neighborhoods don't agree with. So we do make tough decisions, but I feel like in this situation, I don't feel like the homework was done, and I don't feel comfortable supporting it yet. Those are all my comments. So, does anyone else have any other comments? And then maybe just.
I would echo what you said. I went on my trip to see a respite center, and they answered my questions. And when I left with the staff people, I, that was the first thing I said, now talk to the neighbors. I mean, they just, if, if you're just, you know, this, they have a sign on that property, and it's talking about housing coming there, and I think in their mind, when you see a sign that says housing, they're thinking housing. I just think they need some time to ask questions. There's a, there was a lot of questions here that were, were really good, and they were different questions. And I, I think I'd rather have, you know, hold this over and have the, the community have an opportunity to talk to the staff than the question about if, if a flyer said that they, they're taking mentally ill patients, is it, is it a chronic mental illness or none? Or, you know, I think there's room for, for discussion and better understanding of what it is.
Yeah, and in our, in our packet, it says there are 20 beds. I don't know if that's an error or not, and then the presentation tonight is 30 beds. So I think we just need some further clarification too. So at this point.
Staff report actually states 20 person, but the, but TGI has since cleared that it's 30 beds. So if TGI wants to give some more clarity on.
I think we've heard it's 30 beds.
Yeah.
Right, 30 beds?
Yeah.
So may I just want to jump in right here. So the resolution says 20 person, and so if council is going to adopt or does adopt the resolution, you'll have to make a motion to revise the resolution to state 30, 30 beds.
So, so I'm going to make a motion to support the neighborhood association's request to delay this. And I want this to move expeditiously, so delay it till August 3rd, which is our next council meeting, that you get everybody time to have the conversation, so that's my motion.
So we have a motion on the floor to move this item to the August 3rd meeting for further discussion.
Ask a question on that?
Yeah, can we ask, is it now time, or does it need a second? Michelle, do we need a second to have a conversation?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So someone want to second that so we can have a discussion on the motion?
Second.
Thank you.
Is there anything with that timeline that would delay the, the, whatever you're filing? Is that going to mess it up or anything, or would that work?
So it's rolling applications. So the longer we wait, the more opportunity there is for other projects to get in front of us. So it might, or it might not. I think a couple of things to be clear, and I think you had addressed it a little bit. The application needs a letter of support. It can be TGI's letter of support, and we've already submitted that. So that's the only letter that is truly needed here. We want it to be transparent and have outreach. I am not meeting with any neighbors until we meet with every single council member because I don't want a council member to get a phone call about a project they haven't heard about. And I don't go to the council until I go to that guy, right there, Dom Casey. So he was actually my first meeting. It's a tight timeframe. It just is. Sometimes you're just, you get things in life that are just, it's not the way you want it to be, but it's just a timeframe that you have to deal with. The last council member that toured the program was 7-7. Bruce, you were the last one.
Yeah.
I'm not meeting with anybody until you're done, okay? That's already the seventh. Then we got to go to the, the leadership, because I don't want to. Then we got to go to the leadership, because I don't want to knock on doors of neighbors till we go to the leadership of the community. So we did that. So, you know, I'm hearing all this stuff about maybe we didn't do the right thing, or do fast enough, or should have done this, shouldn't have done that. This is the timeframe we were given. That's the process we given. We meet with staff, we meet with council members, we meet with leadership, and then we meet with the community. And it's just the way it is. And I apologize if it's not enough, but that's the timeframe that we're under. So yes, to your question, it could hurt us if it's not approved tonight. Okay.
But don't, Ralan, am I pronouncing that right? So I believe you said there are regional funding allocations and pots. Are you aware of any other medical respite? I didn't hear any when I mentioned other medical respites.
I'm not sure of the question you're answering.
Yeah, I'm forming it.
Okay.
Are you aware of any other medical respites? You said this is, in your, in Sutter's and your information, you said this is the first. So if there's a regional pot out there, you've got time.
No, no, that's not correct. Go ahead.
Yeah, so it sounds like you're, are you asking if there's other medical respite programs that have applied?
There are other applications, yeah.
I don't know. They don't disclose the applications that they have.
There could be or not.
There could be.
Mention something about a September 30th date that, I wrote that down. It was kind of, was that like the last day, or that's when this, maybe the state funding stops?
No, that's when the regional allocations go away. So anything that's not approved and funded by then in a region, if there's money left over, it goes back into one pot, and it's allocated anywhere in the state.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Can I recall the question?
Well, go ahead, and then I have a question.
So if we delay this, neighborhood associations, can you meet quickly and get this, so people, you got to get it notified and let people know, have a conversation, and then we go through all this again? Just, yes, you're saying, yes, we can do this quickly?
We will be working very hard to try to accommodate them and get it out as quickly as we can.
Yeah, and that's my question is, you know, is August 3rd a doable timeframe?
No, we push it.
Or is it that we need to hear back, and I'm asking this of my counsel, of my colleagues, you know, or is it that they need to let us know when they're ready? Because, you know, the agendas are, I think, completed, they're issued on Thursday.
That's true.
And so if someone wants to put something on the agenda, when does that need to happen?
For August 3rd, we would have to force it in now. We're approving the agenda items actually today.
So my concern is that it would feel even more rushed again. And so while I'm open to that, I feel like that is what has put us in this uncomfortable spot, is being, you know, having to make a rush sort of decision. So I'm also fine with it being open-ended, and they can follow up with us when the outreach has been done, because I feel like they have a lot more to do.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to August 17th. Respectful of, you know, the fact that there's been.
What if they get it done in time? I'm just like, we're automatically adding weeks on this thing.
Well, I mean, it would have to be done in like two days, and it doesn't seem like we're there.
They can have their meeting the day before the council meeting. I mean, as long as they have it set up so that when we come back, they've had their meeting.
Do you need a second for that one?
You amended your motion?
I'm amending the motion to August 17th.
Dom's, I think, wants to.
Second there. That gives them more time.
Did you have a comment, Dom?
No. August 17th is, August 3rd would be problematic.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, a second.
Correct. So the motion on the floor is to move this, continue this item to the August 17th meeting with a motion being made by Vice Mayor Haldeshell with a second by Councilmember Rakucci. We'll take a vote on this matter. So we'll start off with Vice Mayor Haldeshell.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Abstain.
Thank you. Councilmember Madanza.
No.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes.
Thank you.
Clarification. Michelle?
An abstention is?
What does an abstention mean?
Essentially a no.
No, I believe you're incorrect.
So it used to be a yes to vote, but our meeting procedures changed, and now it's a non-vote.
Non. It's not with the majority.
That's right.
Okay. Thanks. Because I abstained once, and I was told it was with the majority.
Yeah, that was under our old rules.
I wanted to make sure Councilman Albert knew he wasn't voting with the majority.
I got it.
So this motion does pass to move this item to the August 17th city council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. We'll, let's take just a five-minute bio break, and then we'll finish up our agenda.
Yeah, you must have voted under our old rules.
Okay, we are back. Thank you for your patience. We have a couple other items to get through this evening. We'll start with 7.2, which is a 75K VA distribution transformer sole source purchase order. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor Bernuscony and council members. I'm Bill Chaplin, Senior Account Rep, overseeing key accounts in economic development. So for the past couple of years, the electric industry has seen significant supply chain challenges. We've been working diligently and hard with our community development, as well as trying to find ways to procure equipment, and also find solutions to bring awareness at the national level. So Chris has a quick presentation, and afterwards, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bernuscony and city council members. I'm Chris Porter. I'm the Power Engineering Manager for the Electric Department. We're here tonight to seek your approval to do a sole source purchase order for 75K VA distribution transformers. This also will include a 10% contingency for unforeseen change orders on the equipment. So the total amount of this purchase order is going to be $448,913. That's included in our Electric Department fund. However, the expectation is that all these transformers will be used for new development. And since new development pays their own way, they'll actually be, will be reimbursed for the cost of these transformers. And just for everybody's edification, in case you're unaware, the transformers we're talking about are going to be the green boxes you see on the ground in neighborhoods, and those green boxes provide power up to 10 homes. So a little bit of background on how we're here. So there's a nationwide shortage of utility transformers. Earlier this year, we've tried to place an order for 100 and some odd transformers, and at that time, we were informed that the lead time on that equipment was going to be one year, and there was not going to be any guarantees on that delivery. The main struggle that we've been hearing from our main supplier is that they're having trouble sourcing some of the core materials for the transformer, mainly the steel that's used in the core itself. Up until recently, we haven't seen any meaningful delays in any of our equipment deliveries. So this is the first piece of equipment that the supply chain has really been hitting us hard on. And our main priority as a utility is to continue to provide power to our existing customers. We have transformers that either fail in service, or sometimes are damaged by a car or other types of accidents, and so we need to be able to replace those transformers. So our main priority is to make sure we have enough transformers to do that. Secondly, we're very interested in continuing to support new development in the community. Building homes is a big business in Roseville. We want to make sure we can be part of that. We want to do everything we can to support that as well. So what we've been doing, we've been working closely with the, with our existing supplier. We have a contract with Howard Industries that we use to buy transformers on an as-needed basis. So we've been working diligently with them. We get weekly updates from them on the status of our orders. That's important, because then we can track to see where our equipment's at in their manufacturing process. Once we know that they've gone to manufacturing, then we have a comfort level that they're actually coming. Until they get to that point, it's a little challenging, but we speak with them regularly to make sure that our stuff is on track to be delivered at some point in the future. We've also reached out proactively to the development community through the BIA. We've also been advocating at the federal level, so more specifically on those two items. We sent on a weekly email update to the BIA that they deliver to the members on the status of our transformers. We've had two in-person meetings at the BIA office with developers on this issue to get their feedback on how best to accommodate them during this difficult time. On the national level, Mayor Bernuscony, you and our utility director met with the NAHB, which is National Association of Home Builders, at Cap de Cap, to discuss the supply chain challenges we've been having. And then subsequently, on May 20th, we sent a JAM to council explaining these challenges again. And then later, our utility director also revisited the NAHBs at their legislative conference to discuss these issues in more detail. And also since then, late June, we started participating in the ESCC, which is the Electric Subsector Coordinating Council, and that's the main vehicle for utilities to have a liaison to the federal government. And again, I just want to acknowledge the willingness of the development community to work together with us on this issue. All right, so specifically, we have, like I said, we have an existing contract for purchase of transformers of this type on an as-needed basis with Howard Industries. Typically, the lead time on these units are two to three months. They extended to about six months during the pandemic. And like I said, we found out at the end of February when we placed an order that it was going to be at least a year. And for a point of reference, we've ordered transformers in October and December of last year, and we've yet to receive those units. So that's alerted us to the fact that we have to be looking for other sources of supply. Let's see what else. So also, given the current lead times, our normal process is we look at how many transformers we think we need for the next year, and that's how many we order. We've extended that process to include the number of transformers we need for two years, to make sure that we're trying to order as many transformers as we can to support new development and to continue to supply power to our existing customers. So once we found out the lead times of our existing supplier were becoming unmanageable for us, we reached out to all the other domestic suppliers of these units. Going through that process, we got lead times quoted up to two years, and a lot of manufacturers weren't even accepting new orders. So the sole source, and again, these issues on supply are mainly for raw materials, which is the core steel, and a lot of these manufacturers in the United States are also having a skilled labor shortage, so they don't even have enough employees to keep their manufacturing lines running at full capacity. So based on that, we started seeking international supply sources for these units. And we're here tonight to get your approval for a sole source purchase with KP Electric. They're actually represented locally by Anixter, who we deal with regularly for other equipment. So we have a local support that's a liaison between us and the international supplier. A little bit more about KP Electric is they've been in business for over 20 years. They're capable of manufacturing transformers to our specifications, and they're also able to meet the federal energy efficiency requirements. And the quote we've received from them, the average, the estimated cost per unit's about $8,000. Our current contract with Howard, the pricing based on all the supply chain issues we've been having has gone up to $22,000 a year. Our current contract with Howard, the pricing based on all the supply chain issues we've been having has gone up to $22,000 a unit. So we're actually getting a better deal through the supplier than we are with our current supplier. And so we're ordering, our ask is to order 50 transformers. That's their minimum order quantity. And so that's the number we feel comfortable starting at, since we've never worked with them before. So that gives us an opportunity to work through the process with them and gain experience working with them and evaluating their equipment. Also, we continue to seek additional sources of supply, so we may be back again requesting a similar type of action to get another sole source for, through another manufacturer. Our goal is to obtain orders through as many companies as we can to diversify our source of supply so we can continue to support development. Again, we're looking to seek council approval for approval of the sole source, sole source purchase order for the 75 KVA transformers. And at that, I'd like to conclude the presentation, and we'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Does council have any questions of staff?
I have one question. So you mentioned we were paying 22,000 per unit. And with the international company that we're going to be going through, the third-party vendor, they're 8,000 a unit?
Correct.
Do we have any concerns about, I mean, that's a, that's a huge delta as far as quality?
So the, the price recently went up in June to $22,000, you know, on the same size unit. The price previous to that was $5,500.
Okay. So did, did they provide us any stats? Are we comfortable that we're not giving up quality in order to get a cheaper discount?
Yeah. So, I mean, so the, so very, these devices are fairly basic in nature. There are not a lot of materials or a lot of complication in designing and building them. So we don't have any, there's no indication that there's any quality concerns. Like I said, they, they can build to the IEEE specifications, which is what all US manufacturers build to.
Perfect. I was just concerned, you know, unreliability. I don't want to replace them. If we're replacing them more frequently, we're not saving money. But if, if the standards are there, then that's good for me.
I'd like to add one thing on that. We are, we are scouring, you know, the world to find these transformers. And anything we can get is what we're going to go for right now. The, the order of 50 is, is in line with making sure these are a reliable product. We don't want to order 500 and they all fail for sure. So we'll do some testing when they arrive on site for sure and make sure they do meet their standards. But that's kind of the intent. Order a small amount, see if they do, or they are what they say they are.
And part of the process of the design is once they give us a design, we get to review it. They have to do some type testing on the transformers themselves to prove that they meet the design. So we'll build a review of those type, those testing documentation on the transformers as well.
Wonderful. Thank you for that additional comment.
Any other questions of staff from the council?
When you're talking about failure, transformer failure, what are some of the causes of transformer failure?
The main cause for us is usually vehicle versus transformer. But they can fail just by age. So there's a paper insulation that keeps the electrical devices inside the transformer insulated from like the ground. So over time, with the amount of loading on the transformer, the heat generated from that load deteriorates the paper. And these are types of devices that we run to failure. Like that's the, there's no, we don't proactively replace one of these transformers because we don't have any information on what their use is. So the, the failure mode is either going to be an accident or it's going to be the transformer itself is just aged out. And they typically will last for 40, 50 years.
So this is, somebody asked me this question a while back, a couple of years ago. And so if, if a vehicle hits a transformer, it goes out till we get it replaced. Why don't we put up like protection poles or something to try to protect the transformers if that's a common thing? It's a fair question.
Yeah. So we do have standards around distance behind back of curb that accommodates for car and versus, you know, transformer. However, in neighborhoods, it's not appealing to have a boulder at every fourth or fifth house. But yeah, that's a good question. We do have those standards in commercial areas for sure. Yeah.
Yeah. But the ones, these specific ones that we're trying to, that we're short in supply on are going to be, they're, they're exclusive to residential neighborhoods and single-family homes. And they're the ones that get installed on the property line.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Those are learning to drive, so I should just write the city. 8,000 apiece.
I may have misunderstood. Are you asking for 20 or 50 as the?
Yeah, 50 of these units. Yep.
I heard the 22,000. I thought you were asking for 20 and I saw that. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from council?
Maybe just a comment. I know these are particularly going for new housing, but transformer is a transformer. Like you said, if you, one gets, has an accident or dies of old age, we have an opportunity of having enough in our, with our stock for our residents right now.
Right. That was our, our first priority is to maintain a stock for current residents. So we've already, we've already addressed that, and we have stock and inventory available for those. And these ones would be primarily for new construction projects.
Okay, that's good for both. You're good. Thank you.
Okay. I'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak to this item?
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi and Roseville City Council. Jeff Short with the North State Building Industry Association. Just wanted to kind of give our perspective. I'm sure you've heard about all the supply chain concerns that have been racking our industry for the last year and a half or so. Everything from lumber to garage doors, window panes. No item has been more difficult to get, especially recently, than these transformers. This is not a Roseville problem. As you heard, there's issues all over the country, all of our, in the Sacramento region. All of the major power suppliers are unfortunately hit with this shortage. So want to really thank Roseville Electric for doing the good work and finding some, you know, somewhere around the world that they can bring to Roseville and allow for continued development of new homes. I also want to thank you, Mayor Bernasconi, and your utility director and everyone at Roseville Electric for your advocacy at the federal level as well. It has made a big difference through our partnership with our federated partner, the National Association of Home Builders. We are seeing this begin to be recognized as a critical concern in Congress and in the administration as well. So those efforts are also paying dividends. Thank you. So I would encourage you to please go forward with this.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak to this item? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for further deliberation. Anything else?
Good.
Just want to thank you for your work on this. I think this is another example of what makes Roseville, Roseville, right? Is being innovative and resourceful. And I know that these didn't come easy. So thank you.
Thank you with that. So on the motion for tonight is the City Council will consider adopting Resolution 22280, approving a sole source, source, I'm sorry, sole source purchase order for 75 kilowatts VA distribution transformers. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeshell with a second by Councilmember Rucucci. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeshell.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi. Your motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Jeff, for being here. Okay, we have one last item this evening. That's item 8.1, the General 2021 General Fund Arterial Resurfacing Project, a Word of Contract and Budget Adjustment. Good evening, Stephanie.
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi and members of the council. I'm Stephanie Keeman. I'll wait for the presentation. Sorry. There you go. I'm Stephanie Keeman, and I am the Engineering Division Manager, filling in for our Director Jason Chikowski with our Public Works Department. Also with me tonight is Senior Engineer Noah Sevilia. Noah and his team are responsible for the City Projects Section of the Engineering Division, and they oversee the design and construction of city projects such as this one, our 2021 General Fund Arterial Resurfacing Project. The scope of this project is to resurface the streets shown on the map above, which include portions of Pleasant Grove Boulevard, Douglas Boulevard, Kirby Way, Rocky Ridge Drive, South Kirby Way, and Old Auburn Road. Now Noah will share a bit about how Public Works selected these streets to be done at this time, and some specifics about what can be expected during construction. And then I will provide some funding background and restatement of our recommendations. Noah?
Thank you, Stephanie, and good evening, Mayor Bernasconi and members of the council. Selection of the project's streets was achieved through various methods. The city operates a proactive street preventative maintenance program designed to preserve existing pavement by completing affordable resurfacing on seven to 10-year intervals as a goal. Preventative maintenance essentially keeps our good roads good in order to avoid full reconstruction, which is approximately eight to 10 times the cost of resurfacing. Selected streets for this project were last maintained more than 12 years ago. In general, we use a pavement management system software that tracks the current pavement quality index of a street as well as when it was last resurfaced. This software, along with available funding, helps provide maintenance prioritization of the street network throughout Roseville. That said, the software is a tool that assists staff, but other factors such as frequency of repairs, average daily traffic, or coordination with other anticipated work may cause staff to reprioritize specific areas. What to expect during construction? Well, construction of the ADA ramps and sidewalk repairs required prior to resurfacing these roadways is currently underway by one of our on-call construction contracts. The resurfacing portion is anticipated to begin in mid-August and be completed by the end of November. The work being completed will include crack sealing, digouts, repaving of pavement or failed pavement sections. A thin protective material known as micro-surfacing will then be placed over the roadway to help protect it for another seven to 10-plus years. And although lane closures will be required, all roads will remain open during construction. Working hours will likely vary depending upon specific characteristics of each roadway, but will likely include some night work based on high-traffic volumes during the day. Public outreach is another important component of the project. Staff working with our Public Affairs and Communications Department will distribute information via, oh, sorry. We, we got one more. If you could, next slide. There we go. Sorry. Thank you. So public outreach again is in working with our Public Affairs and Communications Department. We'll distribute information via the mailers, door hangers, email newsletters, social media, electronic changeable message signs, which we place throughout the project, and as well as our city resurfacing page, or webpage shown on the slide. With that, Stephanie?
As this council may recall, in your February 2nd, 2022 meeting, the city's budget manager provided an update regarding the final status of the fiscal year 21 budget, which resulted in a general fund surplus. At that time, staff recommended, and this council graciously approved, a budget adjustment in the amount of $4.4 million of general fund surplus to fund the resurfacing of the streets in this project. As Noah mentioned, we prioritize streets a variety of ways and then recommend for resurfacing based on funding availability. Typically, funding for arterial roadways resurfacing comes from portions, our portion of the region's Surface Transportation Program Funds, or RSTP, and state gas tax, which here at the city we refer to as HUT or Highway User Tax Funds. Had council not elected to appropriate the $4.4 million of general fund surplus to these streets, it could have been 2025 or later before enough alternative funding was freed up to repair these specific roadways. By that time, the pavement quality would have worsened, and they would most likely cost more to repair, potentially requiring we wait longer for those funds to build up and so on. Therefore, I just want to reiterate how much staff appreciates this council's continued support of our proactive approach to preventative maintenance of our roadways. The requested $4.4 million was an estimate at that time intended to cover the project design and all staff time, construction contract contingencies, inspection, and as Noah mentioned, the ADA ramp, sidewalk, and curb and gutter repair work that is federally required prior to resurfacing our roads. In your May 18th meeting, council approved the plans and specifications for the project and authorized staff to call for bids. Staff received five responsive bids, with the lowest being Tykert Construction, though the lowest Tykert's bid was 34% higher than the engineer's estimate. This is a trend we've been seeing in bids across many of our projects over the last few months, the result of very busy contractors, inflation, and high oil prices, we believe. The total project budget has proportionally increased by about 32% from $4.4 million to $5.8 million. The breakdown of anticipated expenses and funding sources is shown in this slide. And the three bullets in red are the subject of tonight's recommendation, which to summarize includes the recommendation that council award the 2021 General Fund Arterial Resurfacing Project to the low bidder, Tykert Construction, in the amount of $4,160,910, and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and provide a change order authority of 15% of the contract amount, and adopt an ordinance for a budget adjustment in the amount of $1.4 million of highway user tax funds to fully fund this project. And this concludes our presentation, and Noah and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions of staff?
Maybe just a comment. I really liked your presentation because I think that's one of the biggest calls we get. It's potholes, roads, why is the crack there? Is my road on it? And, you know, and knowing that we, I mean, I remember when we purposely budgeted that $4.4 million. We just, it's, it's a drop in the bucket, but it's in the right positive way to go, and we can be, do more roadway things. But thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay. No other comments? I'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? Excuse me. I'll close public comment. Bring them back to the council unless there's any further deliberation. Do you want to read the motion?
Sure. So tonight, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 22-285, approving an agreement buy-in between the City of Roseville and, I hope I get this right, Tykert?
Tykert.
Tykert. Thank you. Tykert and Sons, Inc., doing business as Tykert Construction, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville, and adopting as well Ordinance Number 6535, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2022-23 budget, and declaring the ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure.
Still moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeshell with a second by Councilmember Mendoza. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeshell.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you both very much. Okay, that is it for our agenda. I'll open up to one last public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the council on any item that's on the agenda? Now I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for staff. Are there any reports out from staff that like to share?
The reports, Mayor.
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Okay, welcome back. Councilmember Albert, you want to start us off with any comments?
No, nothing to share.
Okay. Vice Mayor Haldeshell?
Yeah, Milton.
Wow. Uh, Councilmember Mendoza?
No reports this evening, Mayor.
Come on, Paulie.
No, we're on a roll. Okay.
No, I'm good.
Aww.
Peer pressure.
Well, I could tell you I did my parks, and the parks are really pretty.
Yes.
And Roseville has nice parks.
Good job.
Yeah.
I'm enjoying reading those.
Okay, I don't have anything to add either. We will adjourn the meeting and reconvene back here August 3rd, 2022. Have a good rest of your summer, everyone.